Before we begin, I remind everybody that the Court has made an anonymity order in this case. That is, as I understand, this is acceptable to the parties, that no one shall publish or reveal the name or address of the appellants, who are the subject of these proceedings, or publish or reveal any information which would be likely to lead to the identification of the appellants or of any member of their families in connection with these proceedings. And I ask everybody to bear that in mind in the course of this hearing, because, of course, it is live-streamed. We have to pay particular attention to preserving the anonymity of the parties in these circumstances. Having said that...
Thank you.
Ms Gumbel.
My ladies and my lords, in this appeal, I appeal for both of the appellants. The first appellant is represented by the official solicitor; the second appellant, who was originally represented by the official solicitor, is now an adult and is no longer and needs a litigation friend. I appeal with my learned friends, Mr O'Donnell, Mr Fairgreave, and Mr Duffy, for the respondent are my learned friends, Lord Folkes, Mr Stagg, and Miss Ayers, and then there are five...
Well, we've got lots and lots of representation down on the list. You don't have to read it all out. You've got better things to do.
Thank you, my lady. My lady, can I just begin the brief introduction? The appeal concerns the issue of whether vulnerable children who suffer personal injury as a result of the alleged failures of a local authority's social services department and its social workers to protect them have an arguable claim in common law negligence against a local authority. And I would say at the outset, it's central to the appellant's case that vulnerable children are in a different position from adults. That's a proposition which the Court of Appeal did not accept, either during argument, and it's perhaps apparent from paragraph 114 of the judgment of Lord Justice Davis, that the Court of Appeal treated adults as being in the same position as children. And we say it's central to the appeal that vulnerable children are in the common law jurisdiction, treated in a different position as far as the duties owed to them. And the cases that the respondents allege have overruled the case of Deane East Berkshire, it's notable none of those involve children in any sense. Neither Michael Mitchell or Smith are cases involving children, and I'll come obviously to develop that argument. The issues before this court revolve, to a large extent, around the question whether the Court of Appeal decision in Deane East Berkshire Community NHS Trust correctly sets out the law in respect of the potential common law duties owed to a child by a local authority's social services department and its social workers. And it's submitted the Court of Appeal were wrong to find that the case had been overruled. Far from being overruled, the appellants submit the decision in Deane East Berkshire has been specifically endorsed and adopted by the House of Lords on two occasions. If this decision, as subsequently endorsed by the House of Lords, is found to set out the current state of the common law in terms of local authority liability and tort to protect vulnerable children, then the appellants submit that the decision of Mrs Justice Slade was correct, and this claim should not be struck out but should go to trial. So I intend to structure the appellants' submissions as follows. Firstly, to consider issue one, which is, I've defined as, the journey from Exon Bedfordshire to Deane East Berkshire and beyond, to demonstrate the way in which the common law has developed to support a duty of care being owed to vulnerable children who suffer as a result of failures of social workers and social services departments. And we would submit that often, as in the field of other professional negligence, they've effectively been treated as professionals. I'll come to that when we look at Deane East Berkshire in the House of Lords. They are in the same category in those cases as the doctors and other professionals. And in the field of professional negligence, or the actions of professionals, the allegations are often failures rather than positive acts. And this doesn't make the law relating to admissions necessarily relevant, because failures are very often the allegations made against professionals in terms of their professional duties. And it's a misunderstanding, we say, of the Court of Appeal to categorise this as an admissions case. Failures of professionals involved in the task, either in a public or private capacity, are very often potential admissions, but they are also negligent failures. The core task of social workers is to protect children, and it's frequently failures to act which lead to injury to children, or in extreme cases, to the death of children. The common law duty owed by social services to children has evolved over a series of cases subsequent to Exon Bedfordshire, as was recognised in Ian Deane East Berkshire. And the appellants submit that this has been confirmed and endorsed rather than displaced by subsequent authorities. So from the appellant's perspective, the case of Deane East Berkshire has been endorsed as correct. From the respondent's perspective, the case of Deane East Berkshire has been, as they describe it, impliedly overruled by subsequent decisions of the Supreme Court. It's submitted that until this case was heard in the Court of Appeal, it had been seen as an established area of duty of care, that there was a duty owed to children by social services departments in their decisions about taking children into care, not taking them into care, and in their protection of them. Of course, Deane East Berkshire was a case about a child being taken into care and kept in care. That was the negligence alleged in that case. So they're not all about the decision whether to remove or not, but it was an established area of law. And from that point of view, we would say we don't even really need to get to the Coparo test, because it is an established area of law. But if we do, we say it's just, fair, and reasonable. There should, in relation to the particular group of vulnerable children and the duties of social workers towards them, now be a common law duty of care, as was found...
Is this all part of your number one on your roadmap?
This is the first...
Sounds as if you're actually arguing number one as opposed to telling us what number one is.
I'm sorry. The first, number one, is the journey from Exon Bedford to Deane East Berkshire and beyond, and the cases which have confirmed it. Two and three were the Court of Appeal wrong to find that Deane East Berkshire had been impliedly overruled, and is the application of Young and Bristol aeroplanes appropriate in those circumstances? And four and five are the issues in relation to whether this case should be treated as the Court of Appeal treated and as the respondents asked the Court to treat it, as a housing case that has been shoehorned into a social services case rather than as a social services case. And we say the starting point must be not to look at why these children were suffering, but to look at the fact they were suffering. There was a child with cerebral palsy unable to leave the house, having bricks thrown at him, and a child who, between the ages of eight and 15, made a number of attempts to commit suicide. Those are children at risk, and we say that's the starting point, not the reason why they're at risk is a secondary matter. It isn't right to categorise it as a housing case, it's right to categorise it as a case involving children at risk. So I will deal with those three categories of points. Then my learned friend, Mr Fairgreave, will deal with the comparative law and academic literature issues at the end of my submissions. And the intervenors, I understand, Mr Bagashi, will deal particularly with the family law and human rights issues. So I hope that's dividing up the submissions in a reasonable way. So can I then just summarise the criticisms that we make in terms of the findings of the Court of Appeal before turning to the journey from Exon Bedfordshire? What we say in summary in relation to the judgements of the Court of Appeal are firstly, the Court of Appeal was wrong to overrule Deane East Berkshire, and we say that...
Well, it can't overrule Deane East Berkshire. The Court of Appeal can't overrule Deane East Berkshire.
Well, they purported to say that it had been impliedly overruled.
Yeah, they can say that a higher court has impliedly overruled it, but they can't overrule it.
To treat it as overruled would be a better way of putting it, I'm sorry. They say that it had been, they said it had been impliedly overruled by subsequent decisions of this court. And the reasons we say it was wrong to find it had been impliedly overruled are, A, we say it's correct, B, we say it was binding on the Court of Appeal, C, we say none of the cases that they referred to as having impliedly overruled Deane East Berkshire had done so, and none of them involved children or the law relating to children. And fourthly, Young and Bristol Aeroplane was wrongly applied in order to impliedly overrule Deane East Berkshire. Secondly, we say the Court was wrong to treat this as an admissions case. We say it's a case of alleged failures to carry out professional duties, social workers being treated as professionals. I'll come to the cases where that appears from and where the application of the Boleum test is said to be the appropriate treatment of social workers as professionals.
But professionals owe these duties because, talking about doctors, because the person in relation to whom they have failed to act appropriately is their patient. So there's an assumption of responsibility there. Are you saying that social services departments have assumed responsibility towards the children whom they know about and who may be at risk or in need?
We say, on the particular facts of this case, which I'm coming to as the third category, they had assumed responsibility, because they were involved with the family from the very outset. They placed the family in this accommodation. They spent, I think, £40,000 on adaptations of the property to make it appropriate for a child with cerebral palsy. And they, as we see from the agreed statements, the facts, and issues, they held a number of meetings, and eventually, towards the end of the period, were carrying out section 47 assessments. So they were very much involved with the family. Of course, we don't know the full extent of their involvement with the family, because we haven't as yet had disclosure from the defendants. And the draft report that was before the Court of Appeal and is before, my ladies and my lords, from Maria Ruger points out that the only files she has seen are the mother's files, not the social services files. So the full extent of their involvement cannot be determined, we would say, until trial. But we know enough from the agreed facts and issues to know that they held meetings in relation to this family specifically. These were a family who were, as I think social services now refer to their clients, they were a family that they were very much involved with, particularly because of the disabled child and their duties in relation to the disabled child. They cannot be bystanders, and that is where professional duties of social services start in terms of applying the Boleum test with those families that they are specifically involved with. We'd say they are the professionals with duties towards those children. So we say that it was wrong to treat this case as an admissions case, but rather, it's a case of failures of professionals. Thirdly, we say the Court of Appeal was wrong to treat this as a case involving actions by third parties. Rather, it's a failure to protect vulnerable children. And in most social services cases, where there is a failure to protect vulnerable children, it is the actions of third parties which are affecting the children. In some cases, it may be the immediate family, the mother or father, but in many cases, it isn't. It's a paedophile who may be living in the house, but it's also a paedophile who may be visiting the house. And to make a distinction between a paedophile visiting the house as not being a third party, if that places the children at risk, and neighbours throwing bricks through windows and assaulting the children outside their house is a distinction that doesn't, we say, make much sense in terms of categorising it as a third-party case, when most protection of children involves protecting children from the actions of third parties who are injuring them. So the fourth point we make about the Court of Appeal decision is that it was wrong to treat this as a housing case. It is a child protection case.
Doesn't the way in which housing functions were exercised form quite a significant part of the background here?
It forms a background in the sense that it's one of the ways in which we say there was an assumption of responsibility, and that they were increasing the risk by placing the family in this particular house. But it doesn't prevent them, and it would be, we say, an extraordinary proposition, that if social, if there are vulnerable children who are suffering, as these children were, one of them trying to kill himself, obviously there are problems for that child to say, well, it's a housing responsibility, if we can't move them, we have no other responsibilities to them. To be able to draw that line, that the best thing for them would be to be moved, moving is a housing responsibility, we're not going to move them, so we don't have to do anything else for them, does seem a somewhat extraordinary proposition. And that's effectively, in shorthand, what was found. It's a housing problem, therefore, we have no responsibilities. Or the Court of Appeal have said it's a housing case, and therefore, it's not a case in which social services owe duties of care, or could even arguably be in breach of duties and need to be investigated at trial.
In your pleadings, you set out quite a lot of particulars of negligence. Firstly, in relation to all the claimants, and then secondly, in relation to second and third claimants only. At some point, I mean, I'm raising it now, because it partly has to do with the housing functions versus childcare functions or social services functions. At some point, it would be helpful to know what parts of the claim are still, are actually before us and were before the Court of Appeal.
Yes, I wondered whether, in fact, it was page 70 that set it out, because you amended these particulars of claim, didn't you, and cut out...
My lord, yes. Can I just explain the history? When the claim was started, and the original pleadings are in Appendix Two...
Yes.
But those pleadings were entirely superseded after the, or as a result of, the hearing before Mrs Justice Slade. So that at, in the core volume, at MS 3009, are the particulars of claim which relate only to these appellants, and which the heading says, these particulars of claim are intended to replace in their entirety the previous particulars of claim. And of course, on strikeout applications, the test is, could the claim, if amended, provide a case that shouldn't be struck out? So the matters that were struck out by Master Eastman did include the housing issues which were in the original particulars of claim, and those are no longer subject to this appeal.
Can I just ask you whether it's at page MS 3019, at paragraph 6.2 and 6.3, that you state the case as is now pursued? Is that the whole of it?
Well, that's... The allegations of negligence start at 3018. That we set out, or what we seek to set out in this pleading, is the sequence of events, the statutory backdrop, the sequence of events, which, to a large part, has been repeated in the agreed facts and issues. Then to set out separately the direct duty of care of the social work department, then the vicarious duties of the social workers themselves, then the allegations of negligence start at 6.1...
But the things that they should have done and didn't are at 6.2 and 6.3, is that right?
It is.
That's it.
That is it in terms of, but that includes failed to make assessments, and it doesn't, as one might imagine from the Court of Appeal judgment, only involve direct removal of the children with a care order against the mother's wishes. It's if, and it follows the findings of the social work expert, Miss Ruger, that if the children couldn't be, if the family couldn't be removed as a whole, it would have been better, at least temporarily, to remove the children themselves into a place of safety because they were at such risk. And a child who is trying to kill himself because he's so unhappy in the place that he's living is a child, we would say, at risk, that something has to be done to mitigate that position. And Miss Ruger suggests in the social, the initial social services report, that if the family as a whole could not be moved, then the children should be moved with lots of contact with their mother, but just as a safety measure for the time being. And that's at MS 3149, in paragraph C of Miss Ruger's conclusions. And of course, that's expert evidence for that proposition. Again, these are all matters that would need to be examined at trial and examined against the social services files as a whole.
Yes, I understand that. What I was really just trying to get to was that you need to prove something before you can remove children before, without the consent of their parents, and I was wondering how that was proven.
Indeed.
You'll no doubt come to that in due time.
Indeed. And obviously, the, whether the consent of the mother would have been given is an issue for trial, because it's not even, as is said, as though we were proposing they would be removed without the consent of the mother, but the mother was desperate in terms of what was happening to her children. Whether she would have consented or not is a matter that will have to be investigated at trial as to what would have happened, what help could have been given. And I'm grateful to the intervenors for the air centre have set out in some detail the number of other steps that might have been taken by social services department to assist the children in the short term, short of removal. But it is right that there was, in fact, some respite care offered to them at a later stage, and certainly CN was removed for respite care. So the proposition of removal is put in very stark terms in the Court of Appeal judgment, and we were not suggesting that the failure is a single failure not to take care proceedings and ask for a care order to remove these children permanently from home. We were suggesting there was a raft of things that should have been done to help them, and if there were no other way of taking them away from the abuse that they were directly suffering that was causing such distress, particularly to the child who was so frequently trying to kill himself, then one thing that might have been done to take him to a place of safety would have been to remove him on a temporary basis, either with the consent of his mother or with a lot of contact with his mother, so she knew he would be safe from what was happening to him.
To remove him, the younger, without the older?
No, to remove both of them.
Both of them.
Both of them.
I mean, removing the older is quite a task in the light of his profound needs...
Indeed.
...and his mother's sophisticated capacity to serve them.
Well, to serve them in some respects, but when one looks at what was said by the social workers themselves about her, that she was unfortunately being dragged into this campaign in such a way that certainly the psychiatrist and the social services note suggest that she was being diverted from being able to care for them, that was part of the problem. And it was the problem both for the younger one and to some extent for the older one. And respite care did need to be offered.
Well, the evidence about whether her contribution was positive or negative is equivocal.
It is.
So you're going to say, we know, let it go to trial and be resolved, but that's an easy answer, Ms Gumbel.
It's not intended to be put forward just as an easy answer. It's intended to make the point that these children were suffering. How their needs should have been met is very difficult for us to ascertain without seeing all the social services files and without knowing what social services were or were not trying to do. And it may be on full examination of the files, they were doing all the things that it was reasonable for them to do, but we don't know that. What we do know is that these children were suffering and suffering very significantly.
Yes.
And a child who is trying twice a week to kill himself, drinking bottles of bleach, jumping from windows, and having a rope round his neck, is a child who needs some support and help that he patently wasn't getting. That's the one thing we do know. What is perhaps surprising is that that point doesn't really come across at all in the judgements of the Court of Appeal. And I think from the academic literature and the articles, it is clear that those who read only the judgment do not get the full picture of how vulnerable these children were or the extent to which they were suffering. And I hope that's at least, to some extent, met by the agreed facts and issues, that there are, there is only one mention, I think, in all of the judgements of the Court of Appeal of suicide, and that's in relation to CN, which must be a mistake, and I'm afraid we probably should have picked that up, and I apologise for that, but that is the only mention. And when one looks at the details, these children were in a much more severe state of distress than one would understand from reading the judgements of the Court of Appeal.
Thank you.
I see that in your amended particulars of claim, that have survived the statement that the family was placed by the defendant at the address in question, and that the defendant knew at that time that the family in the next-door property had engaged in the abuse and intimidation of other neighbours for some time prior to that placement.
My lord, yes. And whilst that may refer to a housing issue, it also, we would say, refers to the safety of a severely disabled child being placed there, and the safety of the family as a whole.
Yeah.
And if they're children who are being monitored by social services, that's something that needs to be taken into account when they're deciding what action needs to be taken to protect them.
Well, it may have a bearing on the question whether this is properly analysed as an emissions case.
My lord, it may, but it's, we would say, that the fact that social services are involved from the outset with the family, that they have to decide on the adaptations that are done to the house in order to make it appropriate for a child with severe disabilities, that must be close involvement with that family, and they needed to be closely involved with that family because they had obligations to a child with such severe disabilities. Once that relationship is involved, if it's accepted, as we would say the cases in the House of Lords suggest, that if a Boleum test is appropriate to apply to social workers, then one has to ask, would it be Boleum negligent to allow that family to continue in that situation where these children were suffering in the way that they were? And if it's a Boleum test, that would apply, and whilst they may be failures and emissions in that sense, emissions in the Boleum test are not really pure emissions in the Smith and Littlewood sense. admissions in the Boleum test are not really pure admissions in the Smith and Littlewood sense. The analogy is perhaps between the doctor, and we do say there is a closer analogy with doctors than there is with the police, but I'll come on to that. But the differences between the doctor who doesn't resuscitate somebody they find on the pavement outside the hospital and the doctor who doesn't resuscitate someone who's in the operating theatre in the hospital. One is a pure admission, walking past the person lying on the street outside the hospital. Once he's in the hospital and there is a relationship of patient and doctor, he does have an obligation to resuscitate. Not to resuscitate a patient in the hospital would hardly be seen as a pure admission, whereas not to resuscitate somebody outside the hospital might be. And with a social worker, a social worker who is a social worker generally for that area and doesn't know about a particular family, that may well be a pure admissions case. A social worker who's involved with the family, knows a child with cerebral palsy who is having bricks thrown at them, knows a child aged 11 is trying to kill himself and doesn't do anything, we would say that's not a pure admissions case. That's a case of failures in the professional duties of a social worker in taking steps to ameliorate that very severe situation. Can I then turn to the journey from Exon Bedfordshire? Just list, if I may, the cases that involve children in the main, in the first three volumes of authorities, which in chronological order are Exon Bedfordshire, then Z in the UK, Barrington Enfield, Essing Gloucestershire, then D in East Berkshire, A in Essex County Council, and Arms in Nottinghamshire, which obviously is a different point, but it's, again, the application in terms of children cases. And then the cases that are referred to where the treatment of children is different and the special circumstances that apply to them are the D in East Berkshire case, K in Lambeth, and then that is also emphasised in the case of Michael and in Derby in Richmond. So the history begins with Exon Bedfordshire, and it's where we've come from. Exon Bedfordshire is obviously central to this case. Exon Bedfordshire is at volume three, tab 19. And it's considered, for, I think, the first time, the common law duty of care that might or might not be owed to children by social services. If I can just begin with that, that's at tab 19, involve three. And just take, my ladies and my lords, to the passages that set out what the decision of the House of Lords was in terms of common law duty. MS 850 is where the speech of Lord Brian Wilkinson turns to direct common law duty of care owed by local authorities. And then vicarious liability at MS 853. So those are separately considered. And at MS 851, at page 749, D to E, it's, we say, important to note that, in that case, the foreseeability and proximity were accepted. So the only issue was whether it was just, fair and reasonable to impose a duty of care. And that's perhaps an important consideration because that's something we would say has not changed. And what has changed is the development of the common law in relation to the just, fair and reasonable test. The conclusion is at 752G and seven, MS 854. And I would just, that no professional duty of care was owed to children. Their task was to advise the local authority and not to advise and treat or protect the child. And that is a position we say has moved on.
Sorry, where are you finding that?
I'm sorry, at 753E.
So 855?
It's MS 855, but it's the middle of that page at letter E. And that was similar to what was found in relation to the insurance doctor. The analogy was that of the insurance doctor who only advises the insurance company. And the House of Lords found in relation to the children, the duties were only owed to advise the local authority, not to... There were no duties in relation to the well-being of the claimants or to advise and treat the claimants. And that's a proposition which we say is, we've moved on.
That's the individual social workers and psychiatrists?
My ladies, yes.
What about the authority itself?
The authority itself also owed no direct duty. And in fact, the strongest case that was, the nearest that we got to succeeding was in relation to the social workers, as one sees from the dissent, the slight gloss that Lord Nolan places on his...
Well, where do we find the finding in relation to the local authority itself?
That's in the section Direct Common Law Duties, starting at 850, and dealing with other remedies. And there's the five points, starting firstly on page 851, at letter H. The common law duty of care would cut across the whole statutory system. And then, secondly, the task of local authority and its servants dealing with children is extraordinarily delicate. That's letter C, 750. Next, if liability was to be imposed, it might well be that local authorities would adopt a more cautious and defensive approach. The relationship of the social worker and the child's parents is frequently one of conflict. That's at letter H. And then suggests that there are other remedies. And then applies the Coparo test at letter B on 751. So that's the ruling out of the direct duty. And then at letter G is the separate consideration of the vicarious liability, which was nearer to the situation of the doctors.
Well, one of them was a doctor.
In the, on the facts of the case, yes. And they too only owed a duty at this stage in the Exon Bedfordshire litigation. It was the Emma Newham case. The doctor only owed a duty to the local authority, not to the child because they were employed by the local authority to assess.
Am I right in thinking that there were four cases involved in Exon Bedfordshire? Several different situations?
Yes.
There were two social services cases, the others, I think, three education cases.
Yes, that's what I meant by saying there were. And of the social services cases, one of them was about the allegedly negligent taking children, a child, away.
Yes.
And another one was about allegedly negligent failing to take children away.
Indeed.
There was one of each.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, there were the five children who hadn't been removed was the Exon Bedfordshire. One child who had been removed was the Emma Newham case.
That's what I thought.
And then the other three cases that were heard with it were education cases in which there was found to be a duty, which were E and Dorset, Christmas and Hampshire and Keating. And the only other passage I was just going to draw attention to is the speech of Lord Nolan at page 771, or MS 873, letter H, who, in a very short speech, says, "I would, for my part, hold Newham free from vicarious liability for the alleged negligence of the psychiatrist and the social worker towards the child, in that case solely on the grounds of public policy."
You're not running a case, are you, of vicarious liability?
I'm sorry, my lord.
Your case isn't one of vicarious liability, is it?
It is, it's of both, which is why the pleading separately sets out the direct duties and the vicarious duties. So it's a case...
Oh, yes, I beg your pardon, section five.
I think ever since the speeches in Exon Bedfordshire, we've all been careful to set out the direct duties and vicarious duties separately as that's the right way of doing it. In relation to Lord Nolan took a slightly different position in saying that although he agrees with the conclusions, "I would, for my part, hold Newham free from vicarious liability for the alleged negligence of the psychiatrist and the social worker towards the child, in that case solely on the grounds of public policy." And in the case of the psychiatrist's witness immunity, "Public policy apart, I'm unable to accept that the psychiatrist and the social worker were exempt from a general professional duty of care towards the child. I cannot agree that the relationship was analogous to that which arises in the contractual or commercial context of an examination by an insurance company doctor of an applicant for life insurance." So that was the, a slight dissent in that aspect of making the analogy with the insurance doctor, which was the analogy made by the other members of the committee. Can I then turn to the next case in the development of the common law in relation to social services responsibilities, which is Barrington Enfield, which is at volume one, tab five, MS 115. And this, it's of interest to the chronology, perhaps, that Barrington Enfield was decided in the House of Lords in June of 1999, before the decision of the European Commission in Z in the UK, which was in September 1999. But before, and before the European Court decision, which wasn't until May 2001. That's the Z in the UK litigation, which was Exon Bedfordshire being taken to Europe. But it was after the European Court decision in Osman, and there is reference to Osman and the difficulty that that, for a short period, appeared to cause because the Osman case had said that there was a breach of Article Six in having a strike-out procedure at all. That was eventually corrected in Z in the UK in the European Court. And that was the point the government succeeded on. But the government in Z in the UK conceded there had been a breach of Article Three and a breach of Article 13, no remedy. And that's important to the chronology. But it's right to say that that decision, even of the Commission, was not yet available when the decision in Barrington Enfield was handed down. And that was a moving on in, from Exon Bedfordshire in the sense that it was no longer the case that social services and social workers could not be liable in common law for any of their actions. They could, after Barrington Enfield, be liable in relation to children in care. Of course, there's a distinction, and that was a distinction that was made, but it is still a move, a move away from the, if it is a public policy immunity that applied to social services in the Exon Bedfordshire litigation. And if it is a policy that social workers have such, the five criteria and how difficult a task they have, that still applies to children in care. But in Barrington Enfield, as the House of Lords found, that there should be a duty of care in terms of children, once they are in care.
Was that a duty of care on the local authority or a duty of care on the employees of the local authority for which the local authority was vicariously liable?
Well, I understood it to be both. And it's, but as far as the social worker's concerned, the Boleum test was to be applied, and I'll come to that in a second.
Okay.
Five, MS 125, 125 is the speech of Lord Brian Wilkinson explaining the effect of Osman at that, at letter B. "In view of the decision in Osman, it's now difficult to foretell what would be the result in the present case if we were to uphold the striking out order. It's at least probable the matter would be taken to Strasbourg." Then...
But that's now history, though, isn't it?
That's the history. But Lord Slin, at page 572H, MS 137, points out that the social workers would be subject to, effectively, a Boleum test as professionals, whether a duty of care in respect of their acts and whether it has been broken. And it's at letter H. "Although, in my view, the staff are entitled to rely, mutandis mutandis, on the principle stated in Boleum, the jurisdiction to consider whether there is a duty of care in respect of their acts and whether it has been broken is there. I do not see how the interests of the child can be sufficiently protected otherwise." So that is quite a moving on from the stark position in Exon Bedfordshire, where the policy considerations set out by Lord Brian Wilkinson prevented a duty of any sort in relation either to social services as a whole or in relation to social workers. And Lord Hutton at MS 151, letters D to E. "In the Bedfordshire case, Lord Brian Wilkinson said, 'For myself, I do not believe that it is either helpful or necessary to introduce public law concepts as to the validity of a decision into the question of liability as common law for negligence. I am in agreement with this view. I consider that where a plaintiff claims damages for personal injuries, which he alleges have been caused by decisions negligently taken in the exercise of a statute discretion, provided the decisions do not involve issues of policy, which the courts are ill-equipped to adjudicate upon, preferable for the common, preferable for the courts to decide the validity of the plaintiff's claim by applying directly the common law concept of negligence than by applying a test, a public law test.'" So that was an acceptance then, in the context of that case, that common law principles in terms of the actions of social workers were to be applied and the social workers were to have the benefit of the Boleum test, but to be treated as professionals who could be negligent if they, as it were, failed the Boleum test on the particular facts. The next case, which is the Court of Appeal case, but it's in the chronology, it's referred to in other cases. I'll only mention it briefly, but it does set out the history. As these cases tend to do, they set out the history to date. And then where they think it's moved to is Essing Gloucestershire, volume two, tab 16, MS 584. And in that case, that was a child who was in care, and the allegation was that he'd been abused by foster parents. It was not an arms-type situation where the local authority couldn't be said to be negligent in placing him with those foster parents. The allegations in the case were that the, it was known the foster parents were unsuitable before he was placed there, and that they should be able to be found. If that were the facts found, there should be a common law claim in negligence. Lord Justice May sets out the history through the Barrett case from Exon Bed, and at page six oh eight, there's a passage beginning between letter D and E. It's appropriate to draw together some strands of this developing area of law. Sets out then the history. And then at M S six oh nine, three three eight F concludes, it is clear from these principles that in an ordinary case, a local authority defendant is unlikely to establish a defence which relies on a blanket immunity. Be a blanket immunity for this purpose if it were decided without reference to particular facts, that all cases which have certain basic characteristics were not justiciable, or that in every case with certain characteristics it was not just or reasonable to impose a duty of care. Seems to me it would be incorrect to say, as counsel of the local authorities were inclined to submit, in appeals before this court, cases which may be labelled as child abuse cases are bound to fail as a class. So whilst after Exon Bedfordshire, it probably would have been said, it was said at that stage that was not correct. In Z and the UK, which is in the volume three, at tab twenty, from paragraph fifty seven, M S eight ninety, the European Court discuss the development of the law. It's right to say that the UK member of, member of the court was Lady Justice Arden, as the ad hoc judge in that court. The development of the law of negligence in the UK is discussed from paragraph fifty seven onwards, and the government conceded, that's at paragraph one hundred and seven, M S nine oh three, that, first of all, they conceded a breach of Article three, and then they conceded that although there are a number of possible remedies, the government accepted, in the particular circumstances of this case, the remedies were insufficient alone or cumulatively to satisfy the requirements of Article thirteen. That had been one of the points in the Exon Bedfordshire decision, that there were sufficient remedies, and the government conceded that the Criminal Injuries Compensation Board complaints to the Ombudsman and procedures under the Children Act would not be sufficient remedies.
Is there a reference in one hundred and ten to, well, the position might be different if the nineteen ninety eight act had applied?
My lord, yes, we'd come to that later. Obviously, that comes into the D and E's Berkshire. One of the things that I would stress about, if it is a separate remedy that is said to now be available, that the Human Rights Act, of course, in terms of children, is a very elusive remedy, because there is a one-year limitation that applies to children as well as to adults, whereas in all other, in the common law jurisdiction, children, limitation doesn't run against children until the age of eighteen. And for a child to have a one-year fixed limitation period, one would, I would say, on the face of it, it's not a remedy designed to assist a child at the point when they are in need, because the very people who might bring a claim for a child are usually the people who are causing the problem, either the parent or the local authority. And for a child to have a Human Rights Act claim against a local authority as a charge with a one-year limitation period is a unlikely remedy.
You'll probably want to develop that, and I apologize for taking you out of your course, Miss Gumball.
I've just mentioned that as-
Thank you.
But it is, we would say, the common law development in terms of the social services position, and that's obviously, I will develop when we come to D and E's Berkshire, is in order to meet the, partly what was stark after Z and UK, that the government accepted that there was no remedy for children in the sort of situation that the children in Exon Bedfordshire were in, and that, we would say, could not be met by a Human Rights Act claim, and that was, and it was found indeed, in E's Berkshire, that the common law should develop whether or not the Human Rights Act had yet affected those children, because those children's complaints predated the Human Rights Act. The next case in chronological order, which I've just referred to because it's perhaps-
What are we to take from Z against the UK, if anything?
Is that the position in Exon Bedfordshire was accepted by the government as being a breach of Article three and providing no remedy under Article thirteen.
Thank you.
And that, I would say, is part of the history of the Court in D and E's Berkshire, saying that the common law needed to develop to keep up with that approach.
Thank you.
If I can just draw attention in volume seven at tab seventy, I'm sorry, this is a Privy Council case, but because it's in the, in the chronology, and it's perhaps of interest that it was the sixteenth of July, two, at M S two three six two, tab seventy in volume seven, B in the Attorney General of New Zealand, it's referred to in D and E's, E's Berkshire. It's decided on the sixteenth of July two thousand and three. And it's a decision of the Privy Council from a decision in New Zealand, that there was a common law duty of care owed, and it's a very similar situation to the D and E's Berkshire, whether there was a duty owed both to the child and to the parent, or to either of them, in relation to allegations of child abuse. And the findings were that there couldn't be a concurrent common law duty to the parent and the child, but that there should be a common law duty to the child. It obviously relates to the New Zealand background legislation, but it is a finding in terms of a common law duty.
And this was for not protecting a child once a complaint of abuse had been made, wasn't it?
Yes. And that the, but that the, well, it was that the parent, where a false allegation was made, couldn't be owed a duty, but the child could be owed a duty. A father and his two daughters claimed damages in respect of the alleged negligent way a social worker and a clinical psychologist investigated.
These children were removed.
They were removed, sorry, that's what I was-
It's the other way around, sorry. It, it's very similar to the, or, an case in the D and E's Berkshire litigation of a child removed, where both the parent and the child were claiming, only the child was owed a duty, not the parent, as is apparent, the page two three seven, M S two three seven O, letter C. To whom is a duty of, I'm sorry, letter B, to whom is a duty of care owed? Clearly, the duty is owed to the child or young person, in respect of whom the statute duty to arrange for a prompt inquiry exists in the particular case. Present case, that's of D one as much as D two, because there was a second child that also could have been affected but wasn't directly involved. D two's abuse allegation was well found, and D one also was at risk. Their lordships consider no common law duty was owed to the father. He stands in a very different position. He was the alleged perpetrator of the abuse. In an inquiry into an abuse allegation, the interests of the alleged perpetrator and of the children of the alleged victims are poles apart. Those conducting the inquiry must act in good faith throughout to impose a common law duty of care on the department and the individual professionals in favour of the alleged victims or potential victims, and at one and the same time in favour of the alleged perpetrator would not be satisfactory. And that's exactly the finding eventually in D and E's Berkshire in the House of Lords. Above that case was decided on the sixteenth of July two thousand and three, and then on the thirty first of July two thousand and three was the decision in D and E's Berkshire. And your, your lordships will see the Court in the, in the Privy Council, Lord Nichols, Lord Hutton, Lord Hobhouse, Lord Roger and Lord Walker, who were sitting in the Privy Council on that.
Lord Nichols, I think, delivered the judgment of the board?
My lady, yes.
The New Zealand case, yes.
But really, they were accepting the correctness of an important judgment that the Court of Appeal in New Zealand had given apparently in a case called Prince.
Yes.
And deciding whether it fell within that rubric.
But they were finding it was a common law duty of care owed to the child. And I mention it only because it's so closely before, it stays before the decision in D and E's Berkshire, which of course is central to this, and which is very similar in terms of finding a duty to a child who has been wrongly removed, but not to the parent who is offended by that removal. So D and E's Berkshire's volume one, tab seven, M S two one six. And the the two passages which-
Can we, speaking for myself, I'd be very much assisted to have you pick out the case. I think it's the Duesbury case that preceded, because I think that was the one that had a, a claim brought by the child. I may be wrong. If so, can you briefly remind us, if this is the central one, what the facts in the Duesbury case were?
My lord, yes. Page, M S two five two, letter H. Is where the facts are set out, paragraph one oh five.
So it-
And your lordship's absolutely right.
In a sentence or two, Miss Gumball, is it that there was a wrong diagnosis of sexual abuse by a father, and that the daughter was kept in hospital away from the father for ten days, until it was realised, belatedly, that the daughter had, was suffering from some disease, which had created the symptoms which were wrongly attributed to sexual abuse? Is that roughly the situation?
Exactly, my lord, yes. That's set out at paragraph one hundred and five, and it was the, all the other cases, it was the parents who were complaining that their children were removed from them. But it's, it's perhaps important, in the context of this case, that it wasn't, I say even, it wasn't even a case about whether to remove or not to remove a child suffering at home. It's a much wider application of the fact that there is a common law duty of care owed by social services to children in the context of investigations by social workers, but not to parents. And that, of course, is entirely accepted. That is how the law has, has developed.
Thank you very much.
So that's at paragraph one hundred and five. The two passages that set out the development from Exon Bedfordshire, the journey I'm trying to, to, to take, are at paragraph forty nine, M S two three eight to nine. Having set out, it's the judgment of Lord Phillips, which is the judgment of the Court, and the history in terms of the social services cases is set out in very considerable detail. As under the, the first general issue, starting at paragraph nine. Well, when we get to paragraph forty nine,
Yes, you said that's an accurate summary of what is left of X after the subsequent case law.
My lord, yes. Effectively, it's the two stages. Where have we got to now? And then where do we go to from here? Paragraph forty nine is where have we got to so far? That's what I've been trying to explain by taking your lordships to the cases. I'm sorry, it's been quite a trek, but those are the cases that get us to paragraph forty nine. There is also reference to Phelps, which was the education case. And then there is reference to the New Zealand decisions. And the Prince, and B in the Attorney General, which is why I had, I had mentioned that. And then the, the core, and really the heart of, of this case, is the passage starting, the heading starts on P, M S two four seven, the effects of these decisions. And the, the background of the Human Rights Act. And then paragraph eighty two, can there in these circumstances be any justification for preserving a rule that no duty of care is owed in negligence, because it's not just, fair and reasonable to impose such a duty? And that's why I pointed out in Exon Bedfordshire, that proximity and foreseeability had been conceded and were not even an issue. The only issue was just, fair and reasonable. And that's why the question asked here is, can it, in these circumstances, can there be any justification for preserving that rule? And at paragraph eighty three, and this is, this is the nub of the whole situation, and what the Court of Appeal purported in this case to say has been impliedly overruled, is that at eighty three, insofar as the position of a child is concerned, we've reached a firm conclusion, the decision of Exon Bedfordshire cannot survive the Human Rights Act. Where child abuse is suspected, the interests of the child are paramount. Given the obligations of the local authority to respect a child's convention rights, the recognition of a duty of care to the child on the part of those involved should not have a significantly adverse effect on the manner in which they perform their duties, that being a reference to the defensive practices that have been one of the reasons in, in Exon Bedfordshire. In the context of suspected child abuse, breach of a duty of care in negligence will frequently also amount to a violation of Article three or Article eight. The difference, of course, is those asserting that wrongful acts or admissions occurred before October will have no claim under the Human Rights Act. This cannot, however, constitute a valid reason of policy for preserving a limitation of the common law duty of care, which is not otherwise justified. So it is not a alternative Human Rights Act remedy has to be there. It is the common law that needs to be changed in this particular sphere, and against the background of Exon Bedfordshire having been looked at by the European Court itself in Z and the UK, and the government having accepted there was a breach in the situation itself, that there was no remedy for children. Follows, it will no longer be legitimate to rule that as a matter of law, no common law duty of care is owed to a child- law duty of care is owed to a child in relation to the investigation of suspected child abuse and the initiation and pursuit of care proceedings. And I would say those are separate, that's both in relation to the investigation of suspected child abuse and in the initiation and pursuit of care proceedings, which is not always going to follow necessarily. It's possible there will be factual situations where it's not fair, just or reasonable to impose a duty of care, but each case will fall to be determined on its individual facts. And that's exactly what we say is the current situation. You need to look at the individual facts as to whether this is something that should be determined as a judiciable, whether it's a policy decision, whether it's something in which the social services were sufficiently involved to have assumed responsibility or to owe a duty. In reaching this decision, we should not suggest that the common law duty will implicate the duty not to violate Articles 3 and 8. Liability for breach of the latter duty and entitlement to compensation can arise in circumstances where the tort of negligence is not made out. That, again, is important. They are separate strands, and the later cases identified separate strands, but we would say the decision in D and East Berkshire was essentially that the common law has developed to the position where there can at least be, on the right facts, a duty of care to a child in relation to investigations by social services, whether are investigations that they should have done or investigations that they shouldn't have done, findings they should have made or findings they shouldn't have made. The final conclusion is MS 254, paragraph 109. For the reasons we've given, we do not consider that the Bedfordshire case stands in the way of a claim by R against the local authority for negligence in the manner in which their employees contributed to the child protection investigation, reversed the judge's decision to give judgment in favour of the local authority on that point. So, it's a clear analysis of where the common law has gone from Exon Bedfordshire through the cases that we see in the other cases to a finding that Exon Bedfordshire no longer stands in the way. The following cases, we say endorse that this decision is correct, not impliedly overrule it. The first mention of it is a decision in East County Council, Volume 1, Tab 3, MS 54.
Is that before the case got to the House of Lords?
That is before the case got to the House of Lords, my lady, yes.
Sorry, what's the MS number? I'm afraid I didn't make a note of that.
54.
There is again, and this is simply the reference to, it's again a history of the cases, and at paragraph 41, MS 67, the Court of Appeal has also recently held in D and East Berkshire that those policy considerations are less weighty now, that a similar factual inquiry would have taken place if there were alleged breaches. So, it is an acknowledgement and then again a reference to B in the Attorney General. It's again a history of the cases moving on, and that's what these cases are. They're a journey through and a fine example of how flexible the common law can be when it needs to be and the changing requirements in society. So, that's, MS 67 is the reference to... And a duty of, and there is then reference to MS 73, duty of care to the child was not ruled out. The agency's first duty is towards the child. And there is an obvious moving on from the position where previously, social services, adoption agencies, anybody else concerned with the plight of children were only acting for the local authority to a position where there is an important duty towards the child, who understandably is the centre of the need to be looking at the situation at all. And perhaps now, somewhat surprising to say, that social services only owe duties to their own employers and it doesn't matter what harm or lack of harm they do to the child. The child is only the object of their investigation but is owed no duties. The House of Lords decision in D and East Berkshire is at Vol 1, Tab 8. And the state of the law is summarised by Lord Bingham, who is a dissenting opinion, but his dissent is in the sense that he would have found a duty to the parents as well. But the summary of the law is, I think, uncontroversial and certainly not disputed by other members of the House of Lords. And I'll take your lordship and my ladies to the other speeches, but the state of the law is summarised from MS 271, page 387, letter C. I'm sorry, probably the best place to start is at the bottom of 271. The focus of debate is whether it is fair, just and reasonable to impose a duty of care on healthcare and child protection professionals involved in cases as these. But it is acknowledged, I think, by both sides, and in my view rightly, this question cannot be divorced from consideration of proximity. There are broadly speaking three theoretical answers which may be given to the question. And here is a reference to whether doctors and social workers, to whom I shall refer compendiously, as healthcare professionals. And that's a compendious description that is taken up by other members of the House of Lords in this case, that they are being treated as having the same duties or lack of duties. And that's one of the reasons we say that the analogy with doctors is an apt one in some senses. Obviously, there are different senses, but that the treatment of healthcare professionals was the same, whether they were doctors or social workers, owe any common law duty of care other than to their employer? And if so, what in a case of potential child abuse? The first is they owe no such duty. The second is they may on appropriate facts owe a duty to the child but owe no duty to the parent. The third is they may on appropriate facts owe a limited duty to the parent as well as the child. The appellants contend that the third answer is the correct one. The respondents, by not challenging the continuance of the child's claim against the health authority and the local authority in the second appeal, effectively contend for the second answer. The first answer was that given by the majority of the Court of Appeal and the unanimous House of Lords in Exon Bedfordshire. So, the position is then examined, the history is then examined from Exon Bedfordshire, and the D and East Berkshire in the Court of Appeal left the answer as the second position. There was a duty to the child, but there wasn't a duty to the parent.
Can we go on and read the next sentence, if that's convenient to you, Miss Gumball?
The appellants contend the third answer is the correct one. The respondents, by not challenging...
No, I meant in paragraph 83 of its judgment. Court of Appeal boldly, in the view of some commentators impermissibly, held that that decision of the House in relation to claims by children could not survive the 1998 Act. And before the House, no party sought to maintain the full breadth of the decision. That was the bit that I would be grateful for you to explain to us. What was the area of the decision of the Court of Appeal which no party was prepared to support?
Well, as I understood it, the no party was challenging the part of the decision that said a duty of care was owed to the child. But when we see what the other judges in the House of Lords said, nobody challenges that the duty, in fact, the rationale for the finding of the majority in the House of Lords that no duty was owed to the parent was that there was now a duty to the child and therefore there would be a conflict. You could not find that there was a conflict if there was no duty to either the parent or to the child.
I'm not sure that's quite the point I was asking for assistance on, but it may be it's an unfair question, Miss Gumball. And we will, in our own time, study in particular the report of the arguments in order to decide, in order to discern what Lord Bingham was there referring to. So, why don't you proceed?
My lord, yes. I obviously would want to answer it if I can help. As I understand it, he's referring to commentators who express surprise by the decision of the Court of Appeal, but the fact that commentators express surprise is not something that's going to alter whether the decision is right or not, or whether it is impliedly overruled. The fact that commentators say it, some commentators suggest it's impermissible, is the territory of commentators rather than the development of the law.
Yeah, I think it's the next sentence that interests, or the next part of the sentence, that no party was defending before the House of Lords the full breadth of the decision. And it'd be helpful to know what had been conceded.
It may be that Mr Fairgreave can help you in due course.
Yes.
And it'd be much more sensible, rather than trying to work out an answer to what's obviously an important question on your speech, you continue with the argument and somebody helps you with it. Because I find it a very astonishing statement, given that the whole thrust of the appeal was that the Court of Appeal had not gone far enough.
Indeed, and indeed that the...
That was the whole thrust of the appeal. So, I cannot believe that no party supported as far as the Court of Appeal had been prepared to go.
Please, just in order...
The passages I was relying on in terms of the support for the decision of the Court of Appeal in D and East Berkshire are at MS 277, paragraph 30. Having gone through the history, which is set out again, but it's the cases, I hope I've taken, my ladies and my lords too, are set out again in the history that Lord Bingham sets out. And then at paragraph 30, MS 277, in the light of all this authority, coupled with Zed in the UK and TP in KM, TP in KM being the European decision in the Emma Newham case from the Exon Bedfordshire litigation, it could not now be plausibly argued that a common law duty of care may not be owed by a publicly employed healthcare professional to a child with whom the professional is dealing. In E in the UK, a case in which four children complained of a local authority's failure to protect them from abuse by their stepfather, the European Court noted in its judgment, the government submitted was not correct to assert that the House of Lords decision in Exon Bedfordshire prevented all claims in negligence against local authorities in the exercise of their child protection duties, and argued it could not be regarded as beyond doubt that these applicants would have failed. As in the case of these applicants, the social services arguably were negligent in the way they approached the operation as well as the policy matters. So that the position, as Lord Bingham was setting it out, is that we've moved on from Exon Bedfordshire. Even the government in the European cases isn't saying Exon Bedfordshire provides the bar that it did do when it was decided, as it were. Thus, the respondent's reaction to the claims of the child are key in the second appeal is in no way surprising. And that's a reference to the fact they're not arguing that the Court of Appeal shouldn't have found there was a duty to the children.
Well, they didn't appeal that.
They didn't appeal it, but I think Lord Bingham's saying it's not surprising they didn't because it's now obvious that there's a duty owed to the child. The question is, is there also a duty owed to the parents? Then, in paragraph 35, again, this is still the speech of Lord Bingham, but it's Lord Bingham's speech that deals with this in detail, and I'll come then to the other judges. The fifth policy reason relied on was that other remedies were available to the child under the legislation. House did not explain how the grossly abused children in Exon Bedfordshire were to avail themselves of the available procedures, which could not in any event yield any compensation to child or parent. This point need not be pursued since in Zed in the UK, Her Majesty's Government accepted that in the particular circumstances of this case, the available remedies were insufficient alone or cumulatively to satisfy the requirement of Article 13. And then, in terms of the last policy consideration, MS 279 at letter D, in Exon Bedfordshire, it was plainly seen as an unjustifiable extension of existing principles to impose a duty of care on a healthcare professional towards a child or a parent. But it is now accepted that a duty may be owed to a child, and in certain decided cases, a duty to the parent has been accepted as arguable. And Lord Bingham's position was that there should be a duty to the parent as well, but he was in the minority. Lord Nichols in the majority at paragraph 71, letter, MS 289. It is the combination of these features which creates the difficult problem now before the House. In the ordinary course, the interests of the parent and child are congruent. This is not so where a parent willfully harms his child. Then the parent is knowingly acting directly contrary to his parental responsibilities and to the best interests of his child. So, the liability of doctors and social workers in these cases, again, they're put in the same category of test, calls into consideration two countervailing interests, each of high social importance, the need to safeguard children from abuse by their own parents, and the need to protect parents from unnecessary interference with their family life. The first of these interests involves protection of children as the victims of crime. Child abuse is criminal conduct of a particularly reprehensible character. Children are highly vulnerable members of society. Child abuse is also a form of criminal conduct, particularly hard to combat because its existence is difficult to discover. And there is the amount to wait to be attached to the special position of children. And page, and again, the dealing of, I refer to that particularly because like Lord Bingham, other members of the House of Lords were treating doctors and social workers as being in the same position as to whether a duty of care was owed or not. Paragraph 82, MS 291, interference with, under the heading interest, interference with family life. There is little authority directly on this point. This is the point in relation to the parents. This is not surprising because the law has been developing remarkably swiftly in the field of child protection. Until recently, it would have been unthinkable that health professionals, and I take that as a reference both to the social workers and the doctors, which is why I went to paragraph 71 just to show that Lord Nichols is using the same expression, owed, until recently it would have been unthinkable that health professionals owed a duty to parents. They did not owe a duty even to the child. But the law has moved on since the decision of your lordship, House in Exon Bedfordshire. There, the House held it was not just inequitable to impose a common law duty on local authorities in respect of the performance of their statutory duties to protect children. Later cases, mentioned by my noble and learned friend, Lord Bingham of Cornhill, have shown that this proposition is stated too broadly. Local authorities may owe common law duties to children... Local authorities may owe common law duties to children in the exercise of their child protection duties." And that would seem to be certainly not suggesting that the Deane East Berkshire decision in relation to children was wrong, but rather that it was endorsed. And when looking at the defensive practices, paragraph 86, again, healthcare professionals and doctors in the same category, paragraph 86, MS 298, "this is not to suggest that doctors or other health professionals would be consciously swayed by this consideration. These professionals are surely made of sterner stuff", and I think that must be a reference to Lord Reed in Dulset Yott and her Majesty's servants being made of sterner stuff. But it is a reference to both being in the same category and the law having moved on. Lord Roger, paragraph 106, MS 298, at letter S. "The defendants now accept that the doctors owed a duty of care to the children whom they examined in excess. As the precedents show, it is by no means followed they owed any similar duty of care to the parents." And then, paragraph 108, MS 299, is the fact that the decision, paragraph 108, "there being, on the assumption the appellant's are claiming the same duty of care as was owed to their children, it seems to me there would have to be some factor over and above the foreseeable harm which the parents suffered. The end of the discussion in relation to the parents and the conflict, I would therefore reject the appellant's admission. Defendants owed substantially the same duty of care to the parents as to the children." And again, there's no suggestion that there couldn't be a duty of care to the children either.
That was based on proximity rather than fair, just and reasonable. Is that right? Or is it based on both?
Well, I think it goes further than that in the sense that if it were, if it were thought that Deane East Berkshire, in the Court of Appeal, was wrong in finding there was a duty to the children, that was...
Oh, yes. No, I was trying to see with the parents, the reason the parents were excluded in this paragraph were both proximity and the third comparative test.
I mean, the parents obviously are in a completely different situation.
Yes.
If one, the, one of the main propositions that I'm putting is that social services departments are there to protect vulnerable children. That's their ethos, that's their very nature. So why on earth would they need to owe a duty to parents, which is, their professional duties are to children? That's the point of the, of the children's department. It makes sense that they will owe duties to children in a way that they won't owe duties to parents. In paragraphs, still in the speech of Lord Roger, paragraphs 111 to 112, MS 302, I'm sorry, 111 is page MS 300. "The need to put the interests of the child first in any case of suspected abuse is a theme which runs through the guidance in working together. Doctors and social workers must be alert to possible signs of abuse. If they suspect that a child is suffering, risk of suffering significant harm, they should refer their concerns to the appropriate agency. They are specifically warned that the interests of parents and children may conflict. In such cases, the child's interests should be the priority." And that was the basis for finding no duty to the parents was the conflict, as we see from paragraph 114 on MS 302, reference to B in the Attorney General. And then, just below letter B, "to impose a common law duty of care in favour of the alleged victims and at one and the same time in favour of the alleged perpetrator would not be satisfactory." That was with reference to B in the Attorney General. "Unnecessary to multiply these citations. They constitute powerful support for the Court of Appeal's conclusion that there are cogent reasons of public policy for holding that no common law duty of care should be owed to the parents. I respectfully agree with the view, which accordingly holds this is not fair, just and reasonable to impose such a duty." And at the bottom of 117, "the potentially wide range of this supposed additional duty could only add to the risk that it would compromise the key duty of care to the children." So again, I would say an endorsement that there is a duty to the children. And then, in the speech of Lord Brown, paragraphs 120.
This is looking at what might happen once the Human Rights Act was in force.
In the context of an action by the parents.
Yes. That, that may provide a remedy where we're not providing one here.
Oh, he refers to Wainwright.
Yes. Which is the...
Sounds as if he wasn't very hopeful.
Yeah, that's, isn't that the airport...
No, Wainwright, no, Wainwright was the strip surgeon in prison.
Yeah, the, certainly the strip surgeon. I thought it, I don't know whether it was an...
Prison visiting.
Strip surgeon. Then, moving on to the speech of Lord Brown, paragraph 125, sorry, perhaps 124, letter E. "It is said in favour of creating such a duty, the doctor will not thereby be required to act any differently than the way he must already act, bound to consider and investigate any reasonable suspicion the child may have been abused. That is a duty which is now accepted, the doctor owes to the child, and in discharging it, he is required to exercise all reasonable and proper professional care." Then, in 125, "First difficulty with this argument is an apparent irreconcilability with a consistent stream of authority from Exon Bedfordshire onwards, holding that no duty of care is owed in these circumstances, no parents, whatever may be the child's position. I confine myself to citations from these cases only, each deciding or at least assuming that contrary to the conclusion reached in Exon Bedfordshire itself, a duty of care is indeed owed to the child." And then, goes through the authorities that I've referred to. the, the final paragraph, MS 308. "I return to where I began, acknowledging the legitimate grievances. I acknowledge those who pay the price of the law's denial of any duty of care, the price they pay in the interests of children generally. The well-being of innumerable children up and down the land depends crucially upon doctors and social workers concerned with their safety being subjected by the, by the law to but a single duty, that of safeguarding the child's own welfare." So, that's looking at the situation after Deane East Berkshire, and we would say no suggestion there that there was anything wrong in the decision that a duty was owed to the child. In fact, it's built on for finding there can't be a duty to the parent as well because of the conflict. The further confirmation, and this is...
Apropos of that, I just wish to trickle the idea, which may be contradicted, that Lord Bingham's remark about no party supporting the full breadth of that decision makes complete sense if he's referring to Exon Bedfordshire.
Yes. That's...
Nobody supported the full breadth of Exon Bedfordshire.
Thank you, my lady. I'm afraid I didn't get that on my feet.
Well, one can understand my lord's question because... But it doesn't make sense if, if it refers to the Court of Appeal's decision in Deane East Berkshire.
Certainly not in the light of it, all the other members of that court's approach, that because there's a duty to the child, we can't have a duty to the parent, and endorsing the duty to the child. For further endorsement, and I hope I can take this quite briefly, is Kay and Lambeth, volume two, tab 10. This is... And page... This is a case dealing specifically with precedent in relation to... And at paragraph, in the speech of Lord Bingham, beginning at page 482, MS 358, paragraphs 40 to 45 are headed precedent. That's important because all the other members of that House of Lords simply endorse what Lord Bingham has said on precedent. So I point to the heading because that is the section that we would say is specifically endorsed. It's MS 372 precedent, starting at paragraph 40.
Sorry, 372.
MS 372. Paragraph 40, Lord Bingham in Kay and Lambeth. And then, a reference to the, and this deals with a different development of the human rights and domestic law. Paragraph 44, the last sentence, "it is by the decisions of national courts that the domestic standard must be initially set, and to those decisions, the ordinary rules of precedent should apply." Over the page, MS 374, I'm sorry, I should have started at the bottom of 373. "To this rule, I would make one partial exception. The judgment on the Leeds Appeal, paragraph 33, the Court of Appeal said, and then, in Deane East Berkshire, this court held that the decision of the House of Lords in Exon Bedfordshire", this is a quote from the Leeds Appeal in the Kay cases. "In Deane East Berkshire, this court held that the decision of the House of Lords in Exon Bedfordshire could not survive the introduction of the Human Rights Act. This was, however, because the effect of the Human Rights Act had underpinned the policy..."
Undermined.
I'm sorry, undermined. Undermined the policy consideration that had largely dictated the House of Lords' decision. "Departing from the House of Lords' decision in those circumstances has attracted some academic criticism", and that's again the, the reference to the right and the academic criticism. It remains to see whether this will be echoed by the House itself. Then, what Lord Bingham says is, "When that case reached the House, no criticism of the Court of Appeal's bold course was expressed. The House agreed that the policy considerations which had founded its decision in Exon Bedfordshire had been very largely eroded, and it was accepted that the decision was no longer good law", and then refers to the House of Lords' decision in Deane East Berkshire. "The contrary was not suggested. But there were other considerations which made Exon Bedfordshire a very exceptional case. Judgment was given in 1995, well before the 1998 Act. No reference was made to the European Convention in any of the opinions. And importantly, the very children whose claim in negligence the House rejected as unarguable succeeded at Strasbourg in establishing a breach of Article III of the Convention and recovering what was by Strasbourg standards, very substantial reparation, said in the UK. On these extreme facts, the Court of Appeal was entitled to hold, as it did in paragraph 83 of its judgment in D, that the decision in Exon Bedfordshire in relation to children could not survive the 1998 Act. But such a course is not permissible save where the facts are of extreme character." And that is that decision. And I just need to refer to the fact that the section relating to precedent is accepted by all of the other members of the court. Lord Nichols at paragraph 50, MS 375.
Well, they might be accepting what he says about the ordinary rules of precedent apply, even when we've got decisions in Strasbourg which are against decisions on local law. They might be accepting that without accepting everything that he says about Deane East Berkshire.
But they don't necessarily need to go as far as perhaps Lord Hope in paragraph 62. I agree with everything that Lord Bingham of Cornhill said in the issue of precedent. Excuse me. And...
Well, I think we can take it for granted that Lord Bingham approved of the Court of Appeal in Deane East Berkshire. But then he would have done that, wouldn't he? Because he was in the Court of Appeal in Exon Bedfordshire.
Indeed.
He's been consistent, he has been consistent throughout, has he not? Yes.
But there is no, this, if there was disagreement with Lord Bingham's approach to Deane East Berkshire, there is, it's certainly not mentioned anywhere in, and at paragraph 213, MS 418. Again, complete agreement from Lord Brown. I, I say this because...
I agree with all that Lord Bingham says, yes.
And likewise, your ladyship at paragraph 178 agrees, and full agreement from Lord Walker at paragraph 177. I don't think I can take it further than that. The other case in which there has been agreement or that the law has reached where it has in Deane East Berkshire is the case of Derby and Richmond. My lady, Lady Black's decision with Lady Justice Thurlwell, vol three, page, tab 30, there is just there a reference to Deane East Berkshire being a different category. Again, we said support for children cases being different and the position in Deane East Berkshire being the accepted progress of the common law in this area. MS 1012, and it's paragraph 14. In the judgment of Lady Justice Thurlwell, "the fact that in the field of child protection only, a broader human rights-based approach has been taken, see Deane East Berkshire, does not avail the applicant in his argument that a common law duty arose here." So again, no, an acknowledgement that the law has developed differently in relation to children and the development from Exon Bedfordshire. Can I just, the next area that I need to deal with, and I'll try to do so very briefly, but it's obviously important, is where it is said that the Supreme Court has impliedly overruled the decision in Deane East Berkshire. The main case is Michael, volume two, tab 11, MS 419. And it's, the Court of Appeal started the quotation from, 419 is the beginning of the case. It's a case about police. a case about police, and from paragraph nineteen is a detailed review of the police cases. Paragraph one hundred and twenty three is the argument that had been put, the Court of Appeal judgments start the quotation at paragraph one hundred and twenty five. I would ask my ladies and my lords to start at paragraph one hundred and twenty three. Support of the argument, the court should develop a common law to encompass the duties of the police under the Convention. It submitted that consistency between the common law and the Convention should be encouraged and relied on, in particularly on observations of the Court of Appeal and Deane East Berkshire. There are certainly areas where the Convention has had an influence on the common law, possibly the most striking example, Campbell and MGN, two points should be noted about that. First, the common law has long been regarded as defective, it was heavily criticised by Lord Justice Bingham in Kay and Robertson. The Human Rights Act provided the means for reform, debates on the bill, and he discusses the Campbell case. The circumstances of the present case are different, but the present case is of course a Court of Appeal, sorry, the present case is of course a police case, and what is, what is said is that the same argument which has been, the appellant's in that case were seeking to argue that just as the duty of care to children in the social services cases has been developed through the decisions of the European Court in Exon Bedford and the Zed in the UK case, and the imposition of the Human Rights Act, why don't we do the same for the police? And we would say that this whole passage, which is the basis for saying that the Deane East Berkshire and the Court of Appeal has been impliedly overruled by higher authority, applies not to undermine the decision in Deane East Berkshire, but applies to not extend it to the police cases. The same argument, paragraph one hundred and twenty six, the same arguments that the common law should be developed in harmony with the obligations of public bodies, including the police under the Human Rights Act, was advanced in the Smith case as a ground for holding that the police owed a duty of care to the deceased after the reported receiving threats. Reliance was similarly placed on the approach of the Court of Appeal in Deane East Berkshire. So this argument of extend the police obligations in the same way as the social services have been extended has already been argued in Smith and not found the favour with the majority. Counselor for Mr Smith relied particularly on the analysis, the effect of the Human Rights Act in Deane East Berkshire. The argument by analogy with that case, which presently commends itself to Baroness Hale, is therefore not a new argument, but one which failed to persuade the majority in the Smith case. The argument was rejected by the House of Lords for the reasons given by Lord Hope and more fully by Lord Brown. Lord Brown did not consider the possibility for Human Rights Act claim was a good reason for creating a parallel common law claim, still less for creating a wider duty of care. Observe the Convention claims had different objectives from civil actions, whereas civil actions designed essentially to compensate claimants for losses, Convention claims are intended to uphold minimum human rights standards.
I wonder if, there may be a better way of looking at it than saying that Michael should be distinguished because police cases are in a completely different category from social services cases. Another way of looking at it might be to say that in Deane East Berkshire, it was accepted, as it had been in Exon Bedford, that the ingredients of a common law duty of care were all present, but in Exon Bedford, it had been said that there were reasons of public policy for excluding such a duty. And what I think I recollect being said in the, in D, was that in the light of the Human Rights Act, the policy considerations which had impressed the House of Lords in X could no longer be regarded as compelling.
Yes.
Now, Michael itself is a completely different case, not because it concerns the police, but because it's a case where the ingredients of a common law duty of care were not present but for a policy argument. It was a case where liability was sought to be imposed for what was characterised in Lord Tullson's judgment as an omission to exercise a statutory power. And that kind of, that type of claim falls into a different category from a case like D, where the basis of the action was negligent positive action of a most serious kind, taken by a local authority in removing a child from the care of her family.
My lord, yes, and that's the very reason why I've emphasised the concession in relation to proximity and foreseeability in the X litigation. It differs from the Hill line of authorities where proximity is a big issue, and in fact the main issue in the original decision was that the police couldn't owe a duty to all women in Yorkshire who might be the subject of the, and so that the police cases raise different, I've used the label a police case, but it covers the range of differences in those cases from the social services cases, which I've been categorising as professional duty of care, where someone has taken on the task of looking after particular children, isn't that much closer to the doctor case than it is to the police cases, where the police owe a duty to the public in general, and there are decisions to be made about resources, and the proximity issues are entirely different. But what I say in relation to Lord Tull, this passage from the speech of Lord Tullson is that he is not prepared by analogy to extend the thinking in Deane East Berkshire for a number of reasons, to apply to police cases which are in a different category for a number of reasons, including the difference position in proximity, and is not saying that Deane East Berkshire, should it be considered overruled, and it's a, it would need to be, if at all, permissible, looking at Young and Bristol Aeroplane, if that's the right way of looking at, to say there's an implied overruling by a discussion that refuses to extend the thinking in one case to another area of the law.
Well, it certainly wasn't an express overruling, and if they thought it was wrong, they'd have said so, wouldn't they?
Indeed, that's one of the points we make.
But he's rejecting here, what Lord Tullson is rejecting is the argument that because an obligation, that because a remedy would lie under the Convention, verfor, the common law should adapt to provide a remedy. That's the argument he's rejecting.
Indeed.
That wasn't, as I understand it, the argument in D. I mean, this is a point, like all the points I've made this morning, it's a point which is actually in your favour.
Of course, it's the policy that's changed, and it's why I've emphasised proximity and foreseeability were always accepted in these cases. It's just fair and reasonable. Has that moved on? Has the approach adjusted, particularly when on the very facts of the Exon Bedford litigation, the government accepted that there were, that there was no remedy in an area where there should have been a remedy, and particularly where the cases gradually moved from the start position in Exon Bedford, as I hope I've taken my ladies and my lords to, that the policy considerations, if that's the right label for them, or the just fair and reasonable test, has been applied with changing standards and in a changing situation.
Well, that seems like a convenient moment, Miss Scumble. We'll adjourn and look forward to hearing further from your side at two o'clock.